convened in Philadelphia to create a more perfect union and create the country's constitution. They worked to develop a framework that would provide balance and freedom, taking into account federal and state interests as well as individual human rights. The delegates signed the Constitution of the United States on September 17th that year. By June 21, 1788, the Constitution was effective, having been approved by nine of the 13 states. And whereas with regards to the recognizing citizens, newspaper magn- magn- magnate, William Randolph Hearst advocated a day to celebrate the U.S. citizenship in 1939. In 1940, the Congress created I Am an American Day to be celebrated in the third Sunday in May. And whereas on February 29, 1952, President Harry Truman signed into law Citizens Day. It was established to replace I Am an American Day. On August 2, 1956, the Congress requested that the President proclaim the week, beginning September 17 and ending September 23 of each year as Constitutional Week. One more change was made to the event when a federal law enacted in December 2004, designated September 17 as Constitution Day and Citizens Day. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Mayor City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, September 17, 2020, as Constitution Day and Citizens Day. In the City of Manor, Texas, in witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this 16th day of September 2020. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. The next proclamation is for Emancipation Day. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on September 22, 1862, Abraham Lincoln issued a preliminary proclamation, which required all states to abandon slavery within 100 days. It declared all slaves, then forced, and forever more free. The Emancipation Proclamation went into effect on January 1, 1863. And whereas abolition of slavery in the United States is celebrated on different dates in other parts of the country. For example, Texas commemorates the liberation of the last remaining slaves on June 10, while residents of Washington DC celebrate Emancipation Day on April 16 each year, remembering the signing of the Compensated Emancipation Act on April 16, 1862. And whereas although the Emancipation Proclamation did not end slavery in the nation, it captured the hearts and imagination of millions of Americans and fundamentally transformed the character of the war. And whereas on the first day of the Civil War, slaves had acted to secure their own liberty. The Emancipation Proclamation confirmed their insistence that the war for the Union must become a war for freedom. It added moral force to the Union cause and strengthened the Union both militarily and politically. As a milestone along the road to slavery's final destruction, the Emancipation Proclamation has assumed a place among the great documents of human freedom. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Mayor City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 22, 2020, as Emancipation Day. In the City of Manor, I urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration and the heritage of our nation and city. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this 16th day of September 2020. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. All right, now moving on to public comments. All right, have a Ms. Rebecca Byrd.
Hi. Hi, I want to thank the mayor for opening the door for us. I'm not from, particularly, I'm Rebecca Byrd, Rebecca Yates Byrd. I'm from Hyatt, Texas, but I grew up in San Antonio. My mother was a, she was raised in Del Valle, Austin, and she was the daughter of Maynard Rogers, whose mother was Lavinia Rogers. And Lavinia Rogers was the person that photographed that I'm giving to the archives here, to the city manager or whatever purposes they have in the future. And this is right before she died, so it's not the most, there are better pictures of her, which I will send to you. And I have another portrait that was posthumously done. It was a painting, and it's a much more beautiful picture. But this, I wanted to go ahead and give this to the city so that they could store it for purposes later. But Lavin- Lavinia, she went by Lavinia, Lavinia, Lavinia. She was sometimes called Lavinia, but her father was James B. Maynard, who founded the town and they gave a lot of property to the train, for the train to come in and for the girls' school, because he had five daughters. He wanted to make sure they got educated. And you probably all know the history. But anyway, we, Maynard has long been, you know, part of our lives. We've often visited, come out here, eaten at the 290 Restaurant. And my grandfather, who was Maynard Rogers, was in a retirement home care for a while. And so I remember as a little kid coming out here and looking around and looking for everything. But anyway, I wanted to just give this to y'all and in the hopes of creating a little museum in some way.
No, we appreciate you adding to the history of the City of Maynard.
And I'll probably do my stuff later. She was dying of consumption about that time. The family didn't put it up.
Beautiful.
But I have another one. I'll show you the painting I have. And one day I'll come and give this to Maynard as well. But it was posthumously done. She was much better looking. There it is.
Impressive.
Really it's beautiful.
This is the, she wasn't better looking all the way.
Who's to say?
Who's to say? But that's, picture that looks most like her. But I'll donate this later. Thank you. Her grandmother had done a portrait from a photograph.
And typically, we're not supposed to comment very, um, citizens' communication. That's, you know, it's one of the things. But we are, we have a historic society that's begun here in Maynard. We are better collecting artifacts ourselves and hope to set up a tourism center with things that are historic.
Yes, and I hope, I have been, I've found this, the woman who is running that.
Yes, yes.
And so I would love to be involved with that, you know, with it to see some of the stuff that's out here. And I'd like to try to, I don't know if the Maynard Post Office is still there, the two-story home on 20, it was about eight years ago.
Uh, it's down on 290.
290. And I'd love to maybe see, uh, getting some fundraising to, and help with that.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any other public comments? No? None? All right. Uh, moving on to reports. Uh, next up is regarding Ascension Seaton Screen and Go. Tracy.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. And the mayor wanted me to reach out and just get some information as what's going on. We at the city have initiated a new tool to assist HR in the constant changing of COVID team, all the symptoms, the different rules and regulations. And Ascension Seaton has come out with an application. It's actually a web URL application. And it's specified specifically to the city of Maynard. It has specific questions for us. And what this application does is in the mornings, they come in, there's a screen and go. I don't know if y'all saw it up here. And you just go either to this URL or you can just snap this and it will go and to keep you our specific web. And it's going to ask you to enter your cell phone. Then it's going to ask you to, it's going to send you an authentication code. And then it's going, you're going to text it in. You're going to fill out the information and you'll get your results. There are literally three to four questions on here. You ask, you answer them daily and you enter in your temperature. What this does actually, and it's, right now I have 70% employees actually participating. And it's really, the introduction went off without a hitch. And it does, it's doing a lot for me since I am a departmental woman. So it does assist me, like, if somebody does have a temperature, it notifies me right away where I can go back, they're going to contact me first and then I'm going to contact them. We're going to talk to each other first. They have, I have specific protocols in place for COVID regarding HR. And this way, my managers and supervisors don't have to, they're going to get contacted, but they're going to contact me first. So another great little feature on this app is that it affects the system the minute the CDC changes the guidelines for any other symptoms. So I don't have to go back and keep updating everything. It's automatically going to do it for me. So actually, so far, this is really how I think. The mayor brought it to me and Tom, that can be all right. And so it's a great little tool for me. So, thank you, sir.
Well, appreciate you, uh, speaking on it. And, you know, as we said, for, for councils to just be informed that of what we're trying to continuously do just to take care of our essential workers. Uh, you know, a lot of times, especially with having to be on self-screening and so forth, sometimes you, you may forget to take a step. But this is at least a way to help and press upon the line every day. It helps with streamlining the tracking of who, uh, may end up having something that, or sign or a symptom. But the, one of the interesting pieces too is it lets Tracy know right away. And she's able to follow up with someone and figure out as well through the Seaton partnership. I live, is, uh, they get contacted very quickly regarding going to get tested. And we talked with Elgin, Clay, and a couple others to streamline that process to getting them tested. Uh, so, you know.
They will even assess, they'll do a doctor's assessment first. And if they, if this isn't the COVID necessary, then I'm going to send them here. You know, it could now, we have strep coming, flu, sinuses, allergies. You know, running noses, nothing to do with COVID. So at this point, this is going to help us assess where people don't have to stay out for seven days while they're waiting, when they can have COVID, or not even, you know, a true symptom.
Exactly. And, and a good thing is she can, and Tom, and the team can always adjust to screen questions. So it's more tolerable to current needs, uh, and break down to the actual building. So, you know, if they're coming here or going to the PD station or going somewhere else. So if the individual does happen to have something, she's able to go back through the documents and figure out where they probably went. And, uh, you know, the good piece of this is for really, we got it right before it went to COS. Um, Seaton is looking at doing more partnerships in the community. They want to do partnerships here in Maynard. And this is one of the first things that they presented as an opportunity and really pushed for us to do it before they went to the, to the COS model. So, uh, any questions regarding, uh, the Screen and Go?
Well, actually, I would like all of y'all tonight, I know tonight's going to be a little long meeting, but I'm going to email this to you and with the instructions, if y'all can actually play with it and see what it's like, I would like for City Council to also start using it in more meetings. And you can test at home, that's the best thing, is that all of this can be done at home. So they don't have to get here and realize, oh, I'm running a fever. Now, if they don't have a temper, if they don't have a thermometer, I have them located up front and the back, so they'll screen when they come in. And this is easier, especially like PD, Public Works, we all have three different buildings of one person running around trying to chase everybody down to make sure, like, hey, how you feeling today? You know, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next report is the Small Business and Startup Entrepreneurship Certification Program. Uh, and so in the booklet H P here, uh, last year was talking with Houston Tillsin University regarding just, you know, our community and the small business entrepreneurship aspect that we have here. And how do we make sure that our local, uh, businesses are able to stay competitive as we continue to grow and as some of the bigger businesses come in? And, uh, you know, there's a lot of free programs. You have school, you have Small Business Development Center. You, you have even City of Austin's program. But in all honesty, they do not really help a business understand putting together pitch decks and, uh, doing market analysis and industry analysis and, and, um, you know, those different types of things. So with Houston Tillsin University, I just got off the, the phone earlier today with Councilwoman Harper Madison. District One Austin also wants to participate in, um, bringing this program together, which will be over about eight to 10 weeks, uh, one Saturday per week. And it would culminate with actually a certificate from Houston Tillsin University uh, and then also signed off by, by us here at, at City of Maynard. And the intent behind that is to really give some true small business operations specialization uh, knowledge to individuals who work on either their current business and how to make it more streamlined, more cost efficient, more profitable, or if they had an idea to ensure that it would be profitable. Um, so that is one of the aspects when we talk about economic development, uh, uh, providing training and so forth from, uh, our local economy. Uh, this is something that Houston Tillsin definitely wants to partner with. And so providing this as situational awareness as, as they are now working on curriculum uh, to present to us, to review, and then hopefully give a blessing on. Any questions regarding this?
What you said? I can already, yeah, good.
All right.
A question.
Go ahead.
Um, on, I don't know if you're going to read it all. But the other programs that were listed in the chart, is that sponsored by City of Maynard also? And HG together?
So, uh, what programs?
Oh, sorry. Um, one says, uh, the three-day summer charter for high school students.
Those, right, those were, those were follow-on opportunities we were looking at doing to provide more robust opportunities and experiences and training and so forth. You know, Houston Tillsin is all about empowering, uh, uh, the, the community and especially with the population that we have, trying to figure out how we can bring some of those things here. Uh, and more specifically, from our side of the house, make sure it's actually beneficial. Um, and so this would be the first, really make sure the curriculum truly does what it needs to do. Uh, and then as they see that it's beneficial, then we can start talking about other opportunities. Any other questions? All right, there being, uh, go ahead.
Um, so what were you thinking was the city's involvement?
So the city's involvement would be hosting here, potentially right here within the chambers, uh, assisting with, uh, messaging and marketing. But, uh, since if we do not make it just specific to City of Maynard residents, then we can be able to utilize our partnerships and relationships, you know, like, uh, D1, City of Maynard, uh, City of Flugerville, Austin Area Urban League and so forth to help with that messaging. Our piece of it is more or less, um, i- i- is more or less being the home station or, or the, uh, not sponsoring, but the hosting entity of the program. You have the same program with City of Austin and UT Austin. Uh, I'm trying to make sure ours is a little more bang for the buck. Any other questions? All right, there being none, moving on to the next topic, which is Civ Start. And with the Civ Starts, this is a, uh, a mayor's, um, a mayor's challenge, so to say, uh, uh, commitment through the National League of Cities. Uh, and it's basically, um, a program that's focused on, uh, identifying the key area of need or focus that the city wants to work on. Uh, having the, a team that's, that's funded through the National League of Cities to work with us on admission statement. Uh, the mission statement that we've currently looked at is regarding revitalization of downtown. And they'll help with us trying to identify how, uh, we want to revitalize downtown but at the same time, uh, tie in some of the growth that's going to be occurring around downtown. Uh, with that, they will also go out and look at startups that can potentially help in putting together a pilot to execute on that challenge. Um, they will write the grant to hopefully cover that pilot program, um, to hopefully 100% or maybe at least a little cost to the city. There's no obligation whatsoever financially, um, up until we push out bids or we push out RSQ or RFP. And if the grant that we are writing does not cover the cost of what someone's, uh, what someone made it for. And so this Civ Start starts, the conference is the mayor's innovative in entrepreneurship conference. It starts tomorrow. Friday, they're going to do an Ask for Commitments. Um, I can hold off until we have, and just do a formal commitment. But the Ask is, is basically, uh, in this, they're going to say, uh, the city of, insert the name of the city, commits to rethinking how it solicits technology solutions for civic problems to be more attractive to potential partnerships with startups and technology-based entrepreneurs. And, uh, you know, we looked at this, uh, we've had a couple of meetings with Civ Start already. And we looked at this as a great way to really get specific targeting focus on downtown and to get assistance with, um, coming up with a plan to help revitalize but also tie into the potential green light and some of the other things that are going to happen. Uh, because we all know, uh, old Maynard feels as if we're only focusing on the growth and the other things that are happening, that's not true. But this is a program at no cost to the city that will allow us and enable us to actually focus on downtown and, uh, you know, provide additional resources for us. Any questions on this?
Yeah, um, I mean, when you talk about revitalizing downtown, man, there's really not much there to revitalize, but the problems that the people are facing are roads and conditions. So if we could do something with that, which I know there's some coming down the road that's going to take care of a lot of that, but, uh, revitalization, uh, we really don't have that much.
Definitely understand. And that's, you know, if you look here in the first paragraph, it says downtown revitalization. Uh, and the statement they put here is the current downtown in Maynard includes numerous brick and mortar stores, older residences, but with the rapidly growing city and a coming light rail is a challenge finding a shared vision of a growing downtown where the history and character of the town can be preserved while allowing for new construction, adaptation to changing residents' preferences and growth. And then for parking and transportation, as you're talking about, this was a key piece of input from Tom. With a coming light rail in an already walkable and bikeable city, there will be increasing public transportation options. However, the rapid growth of the city, the main street will lose a lot of its parking to road widening, making parking a real challenge for getting residents and visitors between downtown and their homes for public transportation options. And so basically, it's, it's a way, what we're saying, we don't have the internal staff. We can't potentially fund the internal staff, the resources, a way of having that asset working for us, um, at, at really no cost to us.
If we can make it happen, guys.
If, if, but the great thing is, if we can, at least we actually, because we, we were able to dedicate time to try to say something.
Right, and, yeah. That's why we're, I, we were very specific in our conversations about limitations that we have and, uh, the challenges that they would face trying to, uh, come up with this plan. And so everything's been on the table as regard to all of those limitations. The small lots, the single-family homes, uh, the, uh, redevelopment of some of the vacant lots, but, uh, of course, we're looking at land that's, that's pretty much developed. Going to have to find ways to make it work in some of the empty, empty spaces.
Yeah, and, and as you know, right, the, the biggest thing we have coming up is going to really be looking at the city of Maynard as a comprehensive plan, which is going to cost. This at least is going to be looking at downtown and it doesn't have a cost. And, and it's almost for us, it's like, don't want to pass.
It's not a cost yet.
It's not a cost yet, right, it's not a cost yet. No, no, right, I'm, I'm sorry, my name's. It's not a cost, it's not a cost yet. But at least they can definitely provide us some, some good insight and, and some good guidance and direction before it becomes a cost. And at least we can say no to the cost, if we don't want, if we don't want to go there. Any other questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, like you mentioned, because we have our comprehensive plan thing working also, uh, does this one have a shorter timeframe for a turnaround? What does that look like?
The, the, the biggest thing that's going on right now is going to be the commitment. And they basically want, they have the commitment that we are going to be rethinking how we do, uh, uh, these types of things, right? Like I said, the commitment statement, that's the only official commitment, is that we're going to think more innovatively, more entrepreneurially, and that, uh, we're going to look at other ways that may not just be the normal way that we've done before, that, that could potentially, um, as far as, what was the other part of your question? Timing, that's the only thing upfront. The rest of it is basically a timeline of us fleshing out and making sure that we agree from the problem statement. And then they'll create a timeline of, uh, that problem statement, action items, so that they can put that together for a bid that, that we would want to put together, uh, that we would approve, then the release for that. And then the proposals, reviewing the proposals, and then whoever we might be interested in going with. Once we do that, then they would go try to write the grant to cover that cost.
And, and while it sounds like it's spread out, I still believe it will take less time than the comprehensive part.
Any other questions? All right, so moving on to, what was it, public hearings, right? What, we're doing a public hearing or we're going to?
Why don't we be executive session first?
Moving on to, never mind, executive session.
What? We're going to go to executive session before we start the public hearing so that, uh, we can meet our attorneys earlier. So we'll need everyone to.
All right, so moving on to executive session, the city council will now, uh, convene a executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Texas Government Code, in section 1.05, the Texas disciplinary rule, uh, professional conduct for consultation with legal counsel regarding litigation matters.
Which, which line?
Yeah, what is the number outlined? What else, Scott?
I don't know.
Okay, we're live.
All right. Uh, City Council will now reconvene into open session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 501 Texas Government Code and take action if any items discussed during closed executive session, and there are no decisions to be made. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, item number seven, consideration discussion of possible action to approve the City Council minutes of the September 2nd, 2020 regular meeting, and B, consideration discussion of possible action on the acceptance of the August 2020 departmental reports. Uh, there is, at least for me, I want to pull out the public works report. Is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, let's, let's do that.
Okay. Public, um, public work report. Uh, for the public works report, can you please, uh, just provide clarity for the community regarding, uh, the right of way and notifying residents on city work, especially those that live in the downtown area?
Excuse me?
The, the right of way?
Okay.
Right of way, uh, links?
Links.
And, and, um, the notification to residents on any city-related work, um, that, that may occur.
Well, the, the right of way, a lot of the stuff that's on the right of way, we do the mowing and the utilities in there. And some of the stuff that we do, we don't notify because it is the right of way. If it's in somebody's, plus it's the public, you know, the yard's going to affect them, then we notify those people. And, uh, there's also, you got the telephone, you got the cable, uh, gas. They go in, they don't do nothing, they just go in.
Are you talking about street construction?
The street, street construction and this clarity on, some people may not know that what may be presumed part of the land is actually right of way.
Okay. Take example of the drainage over here, we're doing that project. All the work that's being done in that, in there, it's actually in the right of way. There's drainage that's been done in there to maintain flow of water so it don't run the new streets that we're putting in there. All that's city right of way. Generally, the public, it's kind, it's kind of confused a little bit. The streets and the right of ways that's going to the road, it still has to be maintained by the public. But we go in there and we do the drainage, they have maintained it to keep it open, the, the full water open so the water flow and that causes other problems.
So, I, and correct me if I'm not answering correctly. So, I think the question is, and, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, that before we begin any right of way work, one of the responsibilities of the contractor is to notify the property owners that are going to be affected.
Yes.
And so they're, they are notified that this is the work, this is the scope of the work, this is the, uh, anticipated amount of time that it's going to take. Um, what folks don't realize is that about thirty feet of what they consider their front lawn is actually right of way. And so from my looking around, based on some of the complaints we got, I didn't see any instances where materials or, or dirt piles or anything were, um, private property. They were in that wide right of way. We're looking at about twenty feet of pavement and an eighty-foot right of way. And so that's where some assumptions are that this is my front lawn. Um, and although I wanted to say that when I looked around, they had regraded a good, uh, piece of the roadway, uh, beginning up, you know, the banks back, and that will all be done before completion of the project, right?
In, in fact, is, the, the company that we have out there, they're super, they have, the fact is they're doing more for us than what's actually in scope. We, we decided to put in a drainage pipe because after we talked to the contractor, we, we want these roads to last and not have to go back five years and redo it. And, uh, once they get finished, we'll, we'll go up and do some bed spacing, spray the right of way so the grass grow. It, we'll, we'll, we'll make it look pretty much.
So, so would be said to assume then with, you saying about thirty feet from the street into someone's yard is considered part of the right of way to the scene?
I'm going to clarify that a little bit because there's, there's no guarantee that that right of way or that roadway is in the middle of that right of way.
Okay.
And so it may sit to the east or the west, local center, it may sit north or south.
So, so was interested in finding out exactly where the right of way is, you know, what part of their assumed land is part of that right of way? Is it in the paperwork when they bought the land or bought the house? Is that where it's at?
It's for sure.
So it's in the packet that most of us never read?
That's right.
If you was actually gone with it, 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 say that you wanted to do something, you, you would need to have somebody set a way to get your paint tomorrow. So you know where your property is?
Uh, when we bought, when we bought in twen- in two thousand right down the street here, uh, I just mowed the yard.
Yeah.
And left the ditches. Well, guess what? City code. No, it's in your contract. I had my wife go reading. Sure enough, we have to take care of the easement.
You know, I'm.
Normally, the easement starts on the side of the water meter that faces the house. That's your property on right through there. And then it's, it's, which I have poles on my back lots, and it's about twenty, thirty feet off the road.
We, we actually, when I was right, we had alleys in all the neighborhood. The fact is, we mowed the alleys because we didn't want the grass to grow high in our backyard, the ice side, you know? It's something that a lot of cities even require that you mow your own alley. We don't, we mow the alleys.
Yeah, y'all have done a lot.
Yes. But when we're cleaning the alley, we'll cut the trees, we'll do whatever we need to. And we're thinking of doing a bunch of cleaning out at this winter.
And, and with the roadwork that's underway, there have been delays with rain, but they're built into the contract.
Yes.
So we're, we're hopeful to have that completed.
Their, their, in the contract, in their contract is actually the end of September, uh, to be finished. But we, the pipe that we put in there, they spend over five, six days putting in the drainage pipe that we required. Or we asked you to do, we paid for it.
So one last question, and I appreciate you providing this clarity. So since the paperwork is in my packet when I buy the land or the house of where my right of way is, and if I do not know where my right of way is, is it, whose obligation is it to find out where my right of way is?
So I would say to you, look at your survey.
Look at the survey.
Survey, there will be a setback established from the front property line. Measure out that far and that's, you're going to be within an inch or two of where that property line actually is.
So it is not supposed to be an assumption that city is supposed to tell you where your right of way is for a land that you bought and a house that you bought, with it being in the packet that you received?
No, we, we can provide, or we have on file with newer properties, the final surveys. If you can't find your survey, let us know, and we can produce that for you. But that measurement is, is taken from the, the frontmost part of your house, the closest part of your house to that property line, and that's where the property line is. You're going to be within an inch or two, uh, based on your measuring techniques.
Yeah, now like, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I think that what, ten, fifteen foot, you know, and there's something maybe right of way in front of the house?
Yes, there's, they're about sixty-five feet wide with twenty-six foot pavement.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Is there a motion on the floor, or is there, uh, anything else that, that council would like to pull out as a separate item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, let me see, that we approve and accept the August 2020 departmental reports.
End amendments.
End amendments. Okay, and they're probably motioned and seconded. Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those who favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen. And, uh, I have comments here?
Yeah, uh, but just, uh, the PIT committee met prior to the, uh, council meeting this evening for, uh, a fairly brief explanation of the properties that are involved. Uh, what we're looking at is an amendment to the original PIT to add a few acres of land that wasn't originally, uh, anticipated. Uh, but what we're doing here tonight is setting the public hearings. And, uh, Tally, I don't know if you want to add to that or not. Uh, Tally, is you coming for the developer?
I missed the first part of what you said, but.
It is the name of this, and you're going to tell us a lot of great things.
It looks like taking my mask off to talk to you guys. Hi, I'm Tally Williams with Matt Capwell, Sir Williams. We represent Four Star, who's the developer of this project. Um, the only thing I wanted to add was in the narrative or the update that we gave you in your council packets, up until today, we were actually anticipating doing a PUD amendment for some of the property. And due to some factors and just timing, we were actually going to withdraw that PUD application. And so I just wanted to point that out. Just says we're going to be PUD limit in there, and at this time, I don't think we're going to go forward with that. So we will be coming before you guys in the next couple of months with an amendment to the development agreement and then various PIT items. Um, this is just the first step in a very long process.
Appreciate it.
Uh, so again, what we're looking at tonight is just to approve the resolution and establish the, uh, public hearing begins for October 7th of 2020.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve the resolution number 2020 dash oh eight and accept the PIT petition for the addition of the land to the Manor Heights Public approved. The district set a public hearing on October 7th, 2020, and direct the city secretary to publish the notice of public hearing on, for September 21st, 2020.
It's been properly motioned and seconded, and properly seconded. Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Go ahead.
So it's going to come back for us to deny the PUD and?
They're, finish, I'll let you finish. So they're, they're not going to bring back, uh, the PUD amendment, they're, they're leaving it as this?
We don't have to take action on it?
No. And what's the, the resolution, the intent behind the resolution?
Uh, I mean, moving forward with a, a PIT requires a resolution that counts.
Good. Any additional questions? There being none, all those who favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Uh, thank you. All right, moving to public hearings now. Uh, let's see here, public hearing number one. Consideration discussion of possible action on the FY 2020, 2021, proposed annual budget of the city of Manor, Texas.
Mayor, council members, uh, this is the second public hearing. Uh, we conducted the first public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I don't recall any questions or anything that we needed to bring back to you. So this would be the second and final public hearing, uh, setting the annual budget for, uh, 2020, 2021.
All right.
Go ahead.
Mayor, council, uh, one addition to, uh, that I'd like to add to the notes that we had read off on the September 2nd hearing was that, um, the one addition is to adding the Juneteenth holiday onto city policy, into the city personnel handbook, um, and that was an action by council on June 2nd, um, to add this as a city into a holiday. Um, that was one thing I did not mention in the prior. It does not change any numbers whatsoever, but I did want to include that in there.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks. Uh, any, any questions? Any comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
They're probably motioned and seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the, there being none, all those who favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number two, consideration discussion of possible action on the FY 2020, 2021, proposed property tax rate of the city of Manor, Texas.
Mayor, council members, uh, as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we are not proposing any change in the, uh, current tax rate.
All right, uh, any questions? Comments? There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would make a motion that would close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Man, properly motioned and seconded. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those who favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number three, which is, uh, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for twenty acres, more or less, out of the James Manor survey number forty and being located at 10507 US Highway 290 East, Manor, Texas, from single family and like commercial to medium commercial. Any questions?
Well, Mayor, council members, this is a request to zone the property, the entirety of the Briada property, uh, to an appropriate zone. Uh, what you see there is mostly residential, and of course, we've got a, a new car sales lot on that property.
Any comments, questions? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Man, properly motioned and seconded. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those who favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number four, conduct the public hearing upon a rezoning request for point thirty-six acres, more or less, lot 11 through 15, in east one half of lot 16, block 29, town of Manor, and being located at 109 North Lexington Street, Manor, Texas, from single family to downtown business.
Mayor, council members, um, this particular property is, um, Mayor, council members, um, this particular property is um, we're gonna try to describe it as saying it was a barbershop at one time, and it's kind of obscured by tree growth and, and all sorts of things, just uh a little bit up the road here. Uh, we have a proposal uh to rebuild on that property, but because of its current zoning, uh, it, they would be limited to single family, and of course, single family on Lexington is becoming more and more of a non, uh, nonstarter, let's say. Uh, so what we're asking for is rezoned to the downtown business district, which will allow maximum utilization of the lot for development, and it is within the policy boundaries established by previous council.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, I do.
So the barbershop place, uh, that land right there, what are we doing with it?
We're rezoning it to allow redevelopment of that property. Uh, right, currently it's zoned for single family. Uh, it was built prior to zoning and, and inappropriately zoned, I think back in two thousand and one. This would allow maximum utilization of that property for uh redevelopment.
For businesses?
For, what we're looking at is a combination of business and residential. Um, I hesitate to say let's zone because we're, we like the project because we're stuck with the zoning. Uh, but this particular zoning is appropriate for that location, I would agree.
Any additional questions or comments?
I think that was my question, but can you elaborate? Because we chose downtown business instead of light commercial or the case to use.
Yeah, right, uh, downtown business district is meant to mimic what a downtown uh streetscape would look like with the villains pushed out to the front property line. The light commercial typically has your parking lots in front and is more, or better situated for properties along that highway. Um, this contributes to the streetscape as opposed to just a parking lot in the front. That would be the difference. Um, I think the uh, there are some other considerations. Um, building heights are the same, I believe, so it's just better utilization of the property will create a good streetscape.
Any additional questions or comments? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Man, probably motioned and seconded. Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number five. Uh, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for point nine one acres more or less out of the James Manor survey number forty abstract number five four six, and being located there, US Highway two ninety east, Grand Manor Road, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily twenty-five.
Mayor, council members, this, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a piece of property that uh Gwire Realty transferred to the apartment complex. And uh, you've seen that, those development plans here. Uh, what this does is allow for the continued zoning for the uh multifamily into what was uh C one. C one wouldn't allow the multifamily.
Any questions, comments?
We have a question.
Tom?
I don't think Tom can answer this. That road, are they gonna continue that road down?
Yes, that's.
Um, definitely yes. Um, we're working on that currently.
Correct.
Um, I'm not sure what the expectation is for completion, but that roadway, what you see is actually half of what's going to be there.
Any additional questions, comments? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been properly, properly motioned and seconded. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number six, conduct the public hearing upon a rezoning request for fifty point thirty-two acres more or less out of the Greenberg Gate survey and being located near North FM nine seventy-three and Johnson Road, Manor, Texas, from agricultural A to two-family TF and medium commercial C two.
And Mayor, council members, I'm gonna let Scott handle most of this. Um, from the standpoint of, of uh what it is we're recommending. Um, if the developer would like to go ahead?
Yeah.
Uh, it's your call.
Mayor, council, my name is Mark Baker with SCC Planning Consultants. We do land planning, landscape architecture, and I'm here representing the applicant. So I would just give you a quick overview of the context of the property and the request for the zoning change. And so then just a handful of slides to give you your bearings on the property. It's a fifty acre tract that's on nine seventy-three. Now, southern boundary is the current Johnson Road, and it's right across from the, the high school. We looked at the uh Manor roadway map when we were looking at this property, and the roadway map shows a primary collector road, which is the green line, the property is the black line outline. And so there's a primary collector that cuts through the middle of this property that we're respecting as part of the layout of the, of the design. And uh, as part of the development of the property, a TIA would be performed for the property to determine any other kind of intersection improvements or turn lanes or signals or anything of that nature uh that might be required. The current comprehensive land use plan calls for the frontage of nine seventy-three to be general retail. And then behind the general retail is the SF three or medium density classification. So it's kind of stepping from a retail to more of a medium density residential to a lighter density residential. So we feel like uh with our request is fitting in alignment with that current plan. Uh, we also have on the west side of the nine seventy-three, there's a high school, there's heavy commercial industrial and more retail. Uh, the current zoning on the property is agriculture, uh, and then to the east, the property is R one. And the proposed land plan is to do a combination of the C two medium commercial and the new two-family district. Uh, it's fairly new zone category uh in Manor. And so you could see on this exhibit, the primary collector bisecting the property uh with commercial on each corner. So we have about, I think it's forty-four acres of two-family and six acres of commercial. And so with that said, that's uh, we, we feel it's a, it's a good opportunity to introduce that new category, just given the proximity to the commercial and the high school and the higher intensity uses along nine seventy-three. It would be a transitional use of a little bit higher density from the commercial, transitioning back to the lower density uh in the residential neighborhoods to the east. So with that said, like I said, I'm here with the applicant and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
So uh, question I have is with nine, nine seventy-three supposedly to become a six-lane, high-revenue generating road. Uh, and I know that it can be, as you stated out, going from commercial to the different phases of housing. Uh, we have so much housing development already occurring. What is the intent or purpose or uh, business concept of, of putting housing there?
Well, my applicant is a home builder and they have a variety of home building products. They're trying to hit a variety of different market segments. And so they feel that this is a prime location for a little bit more density. And given the effects on retail of online services and those types of things, they're just a different world in retail these days. And so what I'm seeing on retail are less shopping centers and less of the, what we would consider traditional retail. We see more neighborhood service, act oriented uses, restaurants, those types of things. And so the demand for the amount of retail when it's competing with your hard corner at nine seventy-three and two ninety, there's quite a bit of acreage of commercial that it would be competing with. So I view this as more of a neighborhood service scale of a retail than a, than a highway commercial. Especially, especially given the neighborhoods directly to the east side.
And then you're looking at the medium commercial, what, what uh aspect from the developer, once they build that out, uh, what type of medium commercial opportunities? Um, are, are they looking to, to, to bring in? Are they looking to collaborate with, or may already have some type of conversations? So we, you know, this, commercial wise, there is more of a need in Manor commercially than develop housing development. So that is gonna be an area of interest as far as what type of medium commercial are, are you all considering?
Yeah, and I don't really have that answer, to be honest with you at this point. But what I would anticipate going in there is, like I said, would be more neighborhood service type things. So you've got your, your uh, maybe some food service. I think especially across from the high school, you could have some food restaurant type uses, you could have more of your neighborhood service type, whether that's a dry cleaner or uh, or um, I can't even think of all the different uses it could be, but something you'd see in more of a neighborhood scale shopping center.
Okay, any, any questions, comments, or comments?
Just for clarification, were you saying that the, the two-family homes would go from a transition of density across there, or was that something?
Now that they become the transitional density, because it's a little bit higher density product than traditional single family. So it's going from a high intensity along nine seventy-three, goes to the two-family, which is the light yellow you see on the screen. And then further to the east, you get into the single family, the actual neighborhoods everywhere today.
Do you all have an approximate number of how many you will be able to fit into inside that point of address?
Jay, do you remember?
Two fifty-four. Two fifty-four.
Two fifty-four.
Any additional questions, comments? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been probably motioned and seconded. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, he has, number fourteen, Mayor, he's also in the press rating. They had requested that I would be with him.
We, we can't hear you.
Send order number fourteen.
They want to move out of the, agenda number out of fourteen.
Yeah, let's go ahead and move to agenda item number fourteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning fifty point thirty-two acres more or less out of the Greenberg Gate survey and being located near North FM nine seventy-three and Johnson Road, Manor, Texas, from agricultural A to two-family and medium commercial C two. We just talked about it?
Yes, I'm not sure.
So we need to say much more. Is there, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we close.
This, this would be uh approved first reading.
Okay, I make a motion that the council, council approve the first reading of rezoning request for fifty point three-two acres more or less out of Greenberg Gate survey and being located near FM nine seventy-three and Johnson Road, Manor, Texas, from agricultural A to two-family TF and medium commercial C two.
Is there probably motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. Just uh, I wanted to say before, but just in consideration for the medium commercial, because I guess in our um future plans for that road of its expansion and being so close to the high school, um, to just be careful about what kind of commercial that we want to bring in over there, because I don't want to see our high school students running across six lanes just to get to, you know, something from there, or if they were at the house, living in those two-family homes, and then having to run across six lanes just to get to high school on time. So just, you know, just being considered there since it's already there, that's all.
Any other questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. All right, moving on to agenda item number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Manor for the fiscal beginning October first, twenty twenty, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Mayor, council, uh, we had a public hearing earlier, uh, today, the second public hearing, and this would be the actual action to approve the annual budget for twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we approve and accept the August twenty twenty Department of Reports.
What more? Number nine. Number nine.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a recommendation that we approve ordinance number five eighty, adopting the annual budget for the City of Manor for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there probably motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance living and belonging taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Manor for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
And Mayor, council members, uh, again, we will not be uh changing the tax rate for the current uh, or for the coming year, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Again, what is our tax rate?
Point eight one six two, I think.
Six one.
Six one. I think it rounded it up, but yeah.
No problem, I just wanna get at least a point eight out there. Um, okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that city council approve ordinance number eight, five point, five eight one, with the following motion, um, move that the property uh tax rate be?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Is there probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? Look.
He cut me off.
He cut you off.
Yeah.
I cut you off?
It wasn't me this time.
I cut you off? My apologies, yeah.
Yes, for this ordinance, you have to read exactly.
Okay.
And I was trying to.
Go ahead, sorry, I'll move back.
Recommendation that city council approve ordinance number five eight one with the following motion, move that the property tax rate increase uh be increased by adoption of a tax rate of uh point eight one six one dollars, um, which is effectively a zero percent increase in the tax rate.
Are you done? All right. It's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I second.
And probably seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Then opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning twenty acres more or less out of the James Manor survey number forty and being located at ten five oh seven US Highway two ninety east, Manor, Texas, from a single family and light commercial to medium commercial C two.
Mayor, council members, this is the uh, we got a property that we, at our public hearing, have.
All right, is there a motion before?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning request for twenty acre more or less of the, out of James Manor survey number forty and being located at one oh five oh seven US Highway two ninety east, Manor, Texas, from single family SF one to, and light commercial C one to medium commercial C two.
Is there probably motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the ordinance rezoning point thirty-six acres more or less, uh, lots eleven through fifteen, and east one half of lot sixteen, block twenty-nine, town of Manor, and being located at one oh nine North Lexington Street, Manor, Texas, from single family to downtown business.
Mayor, council member, uh, again, we just had a public hearing, first public hearing on uh this particular property, um.
The barbershop?
The old barbershop, uh, the property uh to the south of it and
west.
I think west, well, a little bit. It's the empty lot, the barbershop lot, and I think there's a portion of another lot behind it.
Yeah. Okay.
I make a motion that the council approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning request of zero point three six acres more or less, lots eleven through fifteen, and east one half of lot sixteen, block twenty-five, town of Manor, and being located at one oh nine North. And being located at one oh nine North Lexington Street, Mayor Texas from single family asset one to downtown business B B.
Is there probably motion? Do I have a second? And seconded with a hand, uh any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
Is this one of those properties where uh, well, we own it, but it also has one of those crooked alleyways?
We don't own it, and no, uh we don't own any of the property that. Uh we request rezoning, and what we're doing is allowing land use um. The alleyway in this particular property is pretty straight as as far as uh alleyways go, there's no encroachments on any of us.
Any additional questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, consideration discussion of possible action on a ordinance rezoning point ninety-one acres. More or less out of the James Manor survey number forty, abstract number five four six and being located near US Highway two ninety east and Great Manor Road, Mayor Texas. From light commercial C one to multi-family twenty-five.
Mayor Council members, this is a small piece of property that will be added to the multifamily development. Uh immediately south of the Yataford.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that city council approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning. Request of point nine acres more or less uh the James Manor survey number forty, abstract number five four six. And being located near highway, US Highway two ninety east and Great Manor Road, Mayor Texas from light commercial C one to multi-family two five.
Is there probably motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number fourteen, consideration discussion of possible action on ordinance rezoning fifty point thirty-two acres more or less. Out of the Greenberry, I'm sorry, it's number fifteen. Okay, number sixteen. All right, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution to conduct a public hearing on the land use assumptions map. And proposed capital improvement projects recommended by the advisory committee.
Mayor Council members, um Scott's been more involved with this than than I have um. So I, if you have questions, he may be able to answer them a little, a little more um. Concisely than I am, but basically this is the result of the uh advisory committee and the work that they've done. Uh for the land use assumption maps and the capital improvement projects um and they're looking to. Uh meet on November fourth, is it Scott? Or is that the public hearing, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's at the public hearing, okay, uh is there a motion on the floor?
I'm making a motion to council approve resolution. Twenty twenty dash oh nine to conduct here the public hearing for the land use assumptions map and proposal. Proposed capital improvement projects on November fourth twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, consideration discussion of possible action on agreement between T M L Health. And the city of the mayor regarding the flex spending account. We could have did you earlier.
The next five are me, so. The next five, so. We are revisiting our vendor for our flex spending account, and so going with our purchasing policy, we did three quotes. And actually, T M L Health, who also is our health insurance and dental, had the better pricing and. Honestly, it'll be more compact and easier to go with T M L. The reason why is this is a partial contract because T M L bills and their contracts and agreements go calendar year versus fiscal. So I wanted to make sure that our employees had enough coverage and options still until the end of the year, so we went with a partial contract until December. And then in the next one we got.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Like to make a motion that we approve um resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine to conduct a public hearing.
Oh yes, right, I understand.
Recommend that we approve, approve and agree between T M L Health and City of Mayfair regarding the flex spending account.
Do I have a second?
I second.
There probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number eighteen, consideration discussion of possible action on renewing the plan document for F Y twenty 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 twenty-one. Between the city of mayor and flex system spending account, T M L Health.
And so this would be the continuation and the actual renewal of the whole agreement, like I said, this one's a partial, this one's for the whole calendar year.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion um to approve the renewal plan document for fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one between the city of mayor. And the flex uh system spending account, T M L.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, there being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Item number nineteen, consideration discussion of possible action on renewing. The re-rate notice and benefits verification form for F Y twenty 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 twenty-one between the city of the mayor and the health insurance pool. T M L Health and authorize city manager to execute the re-rate notice and benefits verification form.
And so with this re-rate, um Lydia and myself, we had estimated a nine percent increase and the actual is only six percent.
Yeah. All right, uh is there a motion on the floor?
Uh I make a motion that uh city council or renew the re-rate notice and benefits verification form for F Y twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. Between the city of mayor and the health insurance pool, T M L Health. And authorize the city manager to execute the re-rate notice and benefit verification form.
Do I have a, do I have a mo- uh a second?
I second.
Man probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty, consideration discussion of possible action on renewing the F Y twenty 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 twenty-one contract. Between the city of the mayor and alliance work partners for the employee assistance program.
And so this is our E A P, and just a little information is that on a national average, E A Ps are only used two to five percent. The city of Mayfair, we actually access it for more than just E A P, it has several training options um wellness thing um. Programs as well, and so the city of mayor, actually, our employees utilize it at eleven point nine percent, so it is a very usable tool. Our supervisors, our managers, our directors, they use it for coaching and as well.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Like to make a motion that we approve and remove the contract between the city of Mayfair and alliance work partners for our employee assistance program, E A P.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Been probably motion and seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-one, consideration discussion of possible action on the agreement between A E D one twenty-three. And the city of mayor regarding A E D devices and services.
With, this is already budgeted, this was already a program proposed prior to, and what we were doing is adding six more A E Ds to police vehicles. And an A E D machine at both new facility, well, the new facility at Public Works and the older one, and then of course our security.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we approve an agreement between A E D one point three and the city of mayor regarding A E D devices and services. Since I may need it.
There probably motion and seconded with A U S, um all those, any questions to the motion? Questions, all uh there being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-two, consideration discussion of possible action on appointment. To serve as the Capitol area council of government's general assembly representative for the city of mayor.
Mayor Council, you may recall that we uh had talked about this uh just a couple of weeks ago, and. Uh because of our population, the number of representatives that we can have has jumped from one to two. And so we're looking for that second appointment if we're ready to do that. Um I don't know offhand if there was a specific time that needed to be done by. Um but it it uh does allow for that second point.
Some openness wanted to discuss to the foremotion, uh it it is my recommendation that we just wait to fill this this position. Until we have the new elected members um. The only, the only reason to have it filled would be if that individual wants to try to be on the executive committee. And the membership of cap cog is all known elected officials. Uh so a a brand new individual coming on um or or one of you all end up having to go off because elections is. When is it, uh you, yeah, elections is October?
November.
It's November, right?
Yeah.
So you would almost be just filling the role to potentially try to get on the executive committee and then potentially coming off. For, so to me, this is better just to wait. Uh any other comments, questions, concerns?
I guess that's why I was asking that question, just in case you wanna postpone it until after election.
Motion on the floor?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we put it off till after the elections in November.
Uh you, you have a calendar handy, I know I do, but um. I wanted to put it off to a date specific after the elections, so.
Do you want, do you want, do you want a specific date? I did speak to CapCog and they can, uh council can appoint anytime, so they don't. If you wanna, do you wanna kind of count a day by January or February?
So how about just the meeting uh following when there's a warning?
If you're gonna have to. Your new council coming in, so I would be a bit of a.
Well, well, CapCog does, CapCog only needs once, it's all over here.
So we have uh candidates is November sixteen, and then November eighteen is the first meeting. For a new council, so you can do December or November eighteen. Yes, the elections, it will be too late regardless of the situation.
So there's a couple of options, you can postpone this until a date certain, or we can just repost it on a, I'm taking my action right now and. Repost it.
I would say just repost it earlier, it will be after the elections. That would be the normal information, so it's not gonna tell you what to do.
Uh I'm making motion that you postpone it till after the November elections.
Is there probably motion? Do I have a second? And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions, there being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Item number twenty-three, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution in support of the Paris Agreement. Uh basically, this, I came across it during, one of the many things I do during the day on behalf of the city. And uh this is a, a, a mayor's initiative called Climate Mayors. Uh and as we're looking at ways of being more innovative, more, more green, more uh. In this, in this making sure we develop properly, uh this was one of the, the many different types of programs. And things we've been exposed to over the last couple of months by going out and 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 engaging with other entities. And so this resolution, uh and I'll read it, basically, the resolution states. Uh resolution for the city council of the city of Mayfair, Texas in support of the Paris Agreement. It says, whereas the city council and the city of mayor desires to work on local efforts. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions in efforts for binding federal and global level policymaking. And whereas consensus exists among the world's leading climate scientists that global warming caused by emissions and greenhouse gases. From human activities is among the most significant problems facing the world today. And whereas documented impacts of global warming include but are not limited to increased occurrences of extreme weather events. Adverse impacts on ecosystems, demographic patterns, and economic value chains. And whereas responding to the climate change provides communities an opportunity to access first mover advantage. In the range of products, services, and know-how that transitioning to a climate compatible future brings. And whereas the Paris Agreement resulted in a commitment from almost every nation to take action and enact programs. To limit global temperature increase to less than two degrees Celsius with an expectation that this goal would be reduced to one point five degrees in the future. And whereas the city council has determined it is in the best interest of the city of mayor to support the Paris Agreement. And strive to meet the Paris Agreement goal of carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. Now therefore being resolved by the city council of the city of mayor that section, that one, city council hereby approves. The recitals contained in the preamble of this resolution and finds that all the recitals are true and correct and incorporate. The same in the body of this resolution as findings of fact. Two, the city council hereby indicates its commitment to reducing greenhouse gases emissions. Through an implementation of climate action plan that sets goals providing evidence-based measures. For the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and outlines strategic strategies for achieving these goals. And three, the city of mayor hereby joins other US cities in the Climate Mayors Network. In adopting and supporting the goals of the Paris Agreement. Four, the city council commits to exploring the potential benefits and costs of adopting policies and programs. That promote the long-term goal of greenhouse gas emissions reduction while maximizing economic and social co-benefits of such action. And five, if any section, article, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or word in this resolution or application thereof. To any persons or circumstances is held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction. Such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this resolution, and the city council hereby declares. It would have passed such remaining portions of the res- resolution despite such invalidity. Which remaining forces shall remain in full force and effect, and then if it is approved, it will be passed and adopted as of today. Uh if we approve this resolution, it should be sent off to the Climate Mayors Network. That have the city of mayor listed as a member of this network, there is no commitment. Uh or 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 things that we have to sign that may come out of this network, it's more or less getting into the network and being again. Informed of different policies, different, different um uh processes that are going on nationally. That we can be able to potentially incorporate or just be better informed, especially when it comes to all the development. We're gonna start having over these next couple of years to make sure we're very smart on uh what development and what type of green. Uh uh greenhouse gases we need to be asking about. Uh any, any, any questions uh regarding this?
Well, we need to make it up. We're gonna do the motion to approve it.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just opening it up for discussion before the motion, so I can read, kinda, I don't even know if it'll be like, you go read that resolution, so.
I'm sitting here thinking, so to help with the uh greenhouse gas, I'm gonna have to come up with fart bags for my couch, right?
If we create a ordinance for that. If, if there's no questions, do we have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion, city council from resolution number twenty ten dash ten in support of the Paris Agreement.
Uh is there probably motion? Do I have a second? And probably second, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, there being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-four, consideration discussion of possible action to appoint. Two planning and zoning commission members and two city council members to serve on the comprehensive plan and request for proposals review. Two planning and zoning commission members and two city council members to serve on the comprehensive plan or request for proposals review committee.
Mayor, council members, um, what the agenda item is, is described. We do have three planning and zoning commission members who are interested. There is no limit to the two, and so if you're applying to, uh, accept three, Julie Leonard, the vice chair. Uh, Philip Tryon, the chairperson, and Jacob Hammer Schmidt of the, all three young planning commission have agreed to. Participate in the, uh, RFP review for the comprehensive plan.
Question, what, what happens if, if, uh, Jacob Hammer Smith is, uh, selected and then he ends up winning his election?
Um, I, I think all of this has to be done. Before that, um. Yeah, the submitted RFP is the week of October twenty-sixth. Or is it November second, and then the highest rank proposer? Well, there's no limit on, on, uh, council members either. I suppose you could transition.
So the, sorry, the, the earliest award date is November eighteenth, it'd be the, that first council day where they meet, but, um, it, it wouldn't conflict. I mean, it's just a, a review committee, so. Rather, he'd be a committee member, uh, you know, go from three planning commission members to three council members that are on the committee providing you all feedback. And the way it works to, um, the committee is they'll, um, create a shortlist of, uh, uh, proposers. And then they'll do in-person interviews with that shortlist. And they'll have their top-ranked person, and that person will be, uh, asked to enter contract negotiations. And if those are successful, and part of the RFP was a kind of draft contract, so. Everyone who's submitting already has to be the outline of what the city is looking for. If those contract negotiations are successful, then that contract would come to y'all for award. And so, the review committee works more in the background to select that one person to enter contract negotiations, so.
Okay. And the, and the reason I was just asking is didn't want to end up having him on, and then we had two people from, from council. And if we can only have two, then he has to come off if he won, won the election.
Yeah, as long as you, you can go up to three for either. I just, I just did two and two, that way it wasn't as big a load of people, but.
Any, any reason we're just keeping it to planning and zoning in city council?
Uh, just as, planning commission is sort of the planning advisory board for council and council generally has these types of committees. For these kinds of things, uh, and it is just the review committee for the proposals. Opportunities for public participation will be throughout the actual comprehensive plan. So the person submitting, as part of their proposal, has to submit a public participation plan. Which then, uh, when they, if, if they were awarded the contract, there would be probably more details. Public participation process for, um, other community groups to work with the city, work with the contractor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just waiting, I'm just waiting forward on a potential community question as far as, uh, as, as even saw during the committee, uh, why would it just be closed off to?
The, you know, the RFP is really a broad brush stroke of what things we're looking to accomplish. Uh, it doesn't and won't prohibit anything else from coming up during the public participation. But to open it up that way is going to consume probably more time than we want to. Uh, and it's, it's really just a committee that makes sure that everything is, is per, uh, I'm looking for a different word here.
And, um, the scope of work has already been set, so. Inviting, uh, additional community members in to, I mean, they, they couldn't alter that scope of work that we've already approved and released. And selecting the consultant in the contract negotiations really is just a, a financial thing. And so it's, um, y'all selecting the consultant that can do the best part for the city at the correct price. Uh, that works within our budget, um, and so as per, all the public participation occurs. After the contract's awarded, so the contract is, well, it's down to a financial thing, which is the council.
And then, again, it doesn't preclude anybody from any ideas during that public participation. This is just to get the contract, uh, reviewed and, and approved for financial purposes.
Well, either you or Tom be part of the review process.
Yes, I'll be in it, Tom also wants.
Both of us will.
Yeah, with the, the staff side of it.
Unless it runs for ten years.
All right. Uh, is there a motion on the floor? Are you sort of? Uh, okay, any questions?
I think we have to select, we're gonna do two or three, uh, people from planning zoning, then we have to also, I think, uh, two or. Three people from council. So, I like, I can make a motion, I make a motion that we accept three names from planning and zoning. And two names from, uh, city council to serve on the committee.
I'll, sorry, I'm gonna approve it. It, it does require, um, probably daytime obligation, so it's not, so when we invite people to come and interview, you know, it's probably gonna be during the day and, um, the review period, as I said, is, starts the week of the twenty-sixth, so they, the proposals are due on October twenty-third. And so that following Monday, starting on October twenty-sixth through whenever that begins. Within that timeframe is when the committee needs to get together and review all of those proposals. There's only a one-week review period, but we'll rank them. And then get those top three, four, five candidates that will request to come to interviews the following week. I think it starts November second, like, the week of November second, I think that's what it is. Is when the interviews would happen, and those would might be during today. And so, it, it's a little time commitment, it's not just in the evenings.
Okay. So that brings up a good question, uh, one for us before, you know, go for nominations from, from council. But two, the P and Z, three, they are aware of this time commitment, okay?
That was made earlier than that.
Okay. Does, does anybody have questions on the time commitment before we see who's gonna nominate? All right, do I have any nominations from council?
I'd like to nominate myself.
All right, do I have another?
You don't have to, you can nominate somebody else too.
I guess, I guess, I guess it's us two. Go ahead, what, you about to say something? All right. Okay.
I'm nominating myself.
You sure?
Yes, I'm.
Okay, I'll pull my name back out there, all right? Okay, uh, so is there a motion on the floor? We have three people from planning zoning, and we have a nomination of Councilman Harvey and Councilwoman Amesqua. Is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, I can do that. I would like to make a motion to, uh, oh, yeah, to, for city council to appoint. Thank you. Okay, yes, I would like to make an appoint, a motion to approve the appointment of. P and Z members Julie Leonard, Philip Tryon, and Jacob Hammer Schmidt. Um, and also Chris Harvey and Maria Amesqua from council for the RFP review committee.
Has been properly motioned, I have a second?
A second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? There being none, all those who favor raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, adjourned.